Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your cell phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form. They are available at the front entrance. Please present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes to speak. At this time, I will call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace, January 14th, 2020. Tonight, our invocation will be offered by Pastor Daniel Lee of the Grand View Baptist Church, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be read by Jeremy Rivera, who is one of our Park and Rec Committee members. So if you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Excuse me. Oh, thank you. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you once again for an amazing day and your mercies and your grace in which we all need it. And God, as we come before you, gathered in this meeting to seek out once more your wisdom. God, we just ask for your Spirit to be with each of our hearts and our souls and allow us, God, to be guided by you. As that, as through this meeting and through this prayer, we just ask, Lord, that we would be a little wiser and a little bit better stewards of your kingdom and your community here, and allow us, God, to just speak freely of all that is just continually on our hearts. And help us, God, in each day and each step that is guided by you, that we continue to bring your kingdom onto this earth and have Grand Terrace, our communities, our homes, Lord, our neighbors, our brothers and sisters in Christ, always to be reflecting of your image. Help us to stand for what you stand for, to always just love as you love, and to be those who carry out your light into this world. And thank you, Father, for all that you've done for us continually, and in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ready? Begin.
(Inaudible).
Thank you, Pastor Lee. Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson.
Here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Councilmember Robles is absent. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to start with a special presentation tonight. This is a proclamation that recognizes mentoring resource coordinator, excuse me, 2020 National Mentoring Month. Whereas January has been designated as the National Mentoring Month to focus national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits can work together to increase the number of mentors to assure brighter futures for our young people. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of San Bernardino County in the state of California honors caring adult mentors who support young people by showing up for them every day and demonstrating their commitment to helping them thrive, and whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem and growth of a young person, and whereas students who meet regularly with their mentors are more than 52% less likely than their peers to skip a day of school, and youth who face an opportunity gap but have a mentor are 55% more likely to be enrolled in college than those who did not have a mentor, and whereas youth who meet regularly with their mentors are 46% less likely than their peers to start using drugs, and 27% less likely to start drinking, and whereas two-thirds of adults consider it highly important for young people to have mentors, and only a quarter of youth have the mentors they need, and whereas nearly nine in 10 feel that more mentoring is needed in our country, and whereas research shows that 44% of adults are not yet mentoring but are willing to consider it, and mentoring is poised for growth, 18- to 29-year-olds are more than twice as likely to cite having a mentor in their childhood than those over 50, and whereas almost half of today's young adults report having a mentor in their youth, and those rates appear to have been rising steadily over the past several decades, and whereas the Mentoring Resource Specialist and the Mentoring Task Force is designated to bring together existing mentoring programs and resources, sharing information, and facilitating mentoring relationships between youth being served by the Department of Behavioral Health, Children and Family Services, probation, and community-based mentoring programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy McNaboe, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2020 as National Mentoring Month, and encourage organizations, schools, nonprofit organizations, businesses, other entities, and the citizens of Grand Terrace to engage in activities and partnerships that support mentoring with programs that promote positive outcomes such as improved self-esteem, social skills, and knowledge of career opportunities. And it is presented this 14th day of January 2020. I have this very nice plaque signed by all of the council members, and here to accept it is Jerome Poland from the San Bernardino County Children and Family Services. If you would come forward, Mr. Poland, and say a few words about the program.
Thank you very much, Mayor McNaboe, for allowing me to be here today to speak on behalf of our program with the Children's Network and Mentoring Task Force. Research has shown that mentors can play a powerful role in providing young people with the tools to make responsible choices, attend and engage in school, and reduce or avoid any risky behavior like drug use. Yet the same research shows that nine million young people between the ages of eight and 18 years in our country will grow up without a mentor. This is called the mentor gap in America. Although mentoring is trending upward in recent years, the number of youth in need of mentors is also increasing. The need for quality mentors is evident no matter what the size or type of mentoring program offered. For example, court-appointed special advocates, which is CASA, of San Bernardino provides mentoring and advocacy for foster youth in San Bernardino County. CASA has 119 mentor volunteers that match with 181 mentees. However, the need for more mentors is great. There are 233 youth on the waiting list as of November 2019. And I just wanted to say that personally, I had several kids that were on my caseload that needed some help, and I got CASA workers to work with them. They took care of them for, they have a commitment of like 18 months, but the CASA workers stayed with these children from the age of like 10, 11, and now those, they're adults, young adults in their twenties, and the CASA workers are still working with them, and they've been able to, you know, reduce their hospitalizations, reduce them from committing crimes, they've involved in school, and they have jobs. So the CASA is very important, and mentoring is a great need, and we thank you for allowing us to be here today to accept this award on behalf of the County of San Bernardino. And Mayor, I just wanted to say that there are a couple of programs here within the County of San Bernardino that are very important for like kinship families. If there's families out there, either court-ordered placements or non-court-ordered placements where there's relatives taking care of their kin, not their own children, then there are free services that the families can get at three of our kinship center sites that are here within the county. So I have some flyers for that. And then we have a Faith in Motion program is where we're working with the churches and with care portals, and what we do is, there's churches that have been selected as care portal sites, so when the social workers with the County of San Bernardino call and they need a bed or some clothing or something, we go to the church, and the church goes to the congregation, and the congregation get those items for them free. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing about those services. of items from the agenda. Are there any such requests? We'll make sure that that information is available to our residents. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
And if you would join us over here, the council would like to present you with this All right. plaque. Thank you.
Okay.
So we'll move forward with our consent calendar.
Thank you.
All right. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without any discussion. Any City Council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Madam City Clerk, do I have any requests from the public for removal of items?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I have a request to speak by Councilmember Allen.
I just would like to pull item five, please.
All right. And that's the check register. Any others? Okay. So is there a motion on the balance?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Council, or excuse me, motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
All right. Thank you. Item number five is the check register. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to direct our attention to packet page 36, the third item down, which is check number 76928 for electrical vehicle charging station installation for about $178,000. And I'm, well, I'm really happy that we have these electric charging stations here. We have three of them now, and that'll accommodate any electrical receptacle on any cars, and that's a great thing. My question is, the, I know that the chargers are, came from a grant, but did the installation, did all the costs, including installation, come from, any of it come from the general fund, Mr. City Manager, or did it come from grant?
For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, the entire project was funded through a grant program.
Which grant was it?
Actually, it was a dual grant. Mr. French can actually help us with that.
Mr. French?
Yes, Councilman Allen French, Public Works Director. The, one of the grants was, it's called the Skip Grant. It was provided by Edison for providing the charger stations for residents on public property. And then we have our MSRC Mobile Air Resource Board grant that we used to pay for the remaining of the balance due on that.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you so much for answering that question for me. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to move that item?
I'll move item five for approval.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNaboe voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, City Council may not discuss or act upon an item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment, and items may be agendized for future meetings. Do we have requests to speak during this period? Thank you. First request to speak is from Isaac Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, good day. As you, a few months ago, I sent every, mostly some pictures of the, your portion of Locadina. In 2019, City of Colton used SB1 money to resurface, not fix potholes or to put slurry steel. They resurfaced the street from south Locadina up until Palm, and then also north of Litton, leaving the section, leaving the section between Palm and Litton alone because that is your city area. At this point, that, that street does not have any markers on it. When it rains, you don't even know if there's two lanes. It looks like one whole street. The street is very badly alligatored, and your engineer knows what that means, and it looks like there has been attempts to patch it because you can see the black spots, but they don't last. That's why our city just resurfaces the street. And I tried to look at archives to find out when in fact that street was last paved, and there's no record. So, over 30 years that I, I can think of. Also, a second street that's in the same condition as Rosedale, which is south of Seville up until Palm. That street is in the same situation where it has potholes where it had been tried to patch. Patches are already gone, and when it rains, the patches even come out even, even more. That street is also alligatored, badly alligatored, so really, slurry seal would not work. That street has to be, both of those streets that I've mentioned would have to be grinded and repaved. So mentioning those both streets, the city has, now has notice of a defective condition, and hopefully nobody will get hurt on those streets. And I hope the city in the future has SB1 money going to a lot of their streets within the city, and specifically down Locadina and on Rosedale. So, hope you take that in consideration. I live in that area. That's why I traverse that street all the time, both of those streets. So it's concerned, and I hope the city will address it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutcliffe. Director French, if you would address that, you don't have to address it right now, but send to Mr. Sutcliffe and to the council where that, those streets fit in our repavement plan. Thank you. Our next request to speak is from Jeremy Rivera.
Good evening, Jeremy Rivera of Van Buren Street. I wanted to address the last City Council meeting. The mayor, the city manager, and I sat down for coffee one morning, I believe it was the spring, and I gave the mayor my word that I would try to contain myself during City Council meetings and not to have outbursts. And I want to say I'm sorry because I had an outburst at the last City Council meeting because I believe that the First Amendment freedom of speech was being violated. I've been a public servant for almost 30 years, and I'm retired, and I believe when rights are being violated, someone should say something. Well, there were 29 people that sent in emails for Jeremy Briggs. They weren't here to say anything. There are six people that sent in emails for Jeffrey McConnell. They weren't here to say anything. And I said something from my chair, and I believe that their First Amendment rights were violated. And I, and I want to say I'm sorry, but you can't violate people's First Amendment rights. If they're here or not here, those letters should have been read. In 30 years of going to meetings, I've never been to a meeting. If someone sends in an email, it's read. If we have to sit here until 2:00 in the morning, you ran for City Council. If the meeting goes that long, that's how long it takes. I only have three minutes, so I have other things to address. Cal Skate had a riot. I was there. I saw the two squad cars come around, and I flipped back my SUV because I was charging my battery up. It hadn't been ran since we got back from Christmas, and I thought, oh my God. I saw the two deputies go in, and I didn't know if those guys were going to come out alive. I saw multiple responses, probably approximately 10 units and a chopper with approximately 200 people. They were pushed to State of Brothers. State of Brothers was on lockdown. Poor McDonald's, I don't think got the message. McDonald's was overwhelmed with people inside, juveniles primarily. I finally saw a sergeant, I think came from Highland, in a Dodge Charger, poor guy, but I just want to commend our Sheriff's Department for what they did. They were underpowered, but they tried to get a handle on it, and it, it was scary. It would have been, I would have been scared to be a cop out there that night because they didn't know what they were getting into. So we need to look at beefing up security there, and someone needs to address that. Streets. I live on Van Buren. We need to do something with the streets. Pico, Van Buren, Barton, Mount Vernon, the state of our streets is bad. Also, I only have 20 seconds left. I'd like to see maybe a weekly update of things going on in the city on the city's webpage, a newsletter. Like Taco Bell was supposed to be torn down before New Year's, but Taco Bell, what's going on? Or where's the food outlet? And fire tax. I'm still paying $157 for my fire tax. Can we figure that out? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. And the last request to speak I have is from Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, Grand Terrace. Couple things from the last meeting. First thing, I inadvertently spoke, I said that I attended the last general plan update in 2016. That was incorrect. It was around 2010. Also, the, when the mayor got very insistent that I give my address to the public here while live television out there in the public in this difficult world we live in, I think that policy needs to change immediately because, as you know, there's a lot of break-ins. I hear problems all the time from council members as well as Facebook, and I don't think people should be standing here giving their address when people out there are listening, so I would suggest that policy change immediately before someone gets robbed while they're standing here. Appeal. Last time I was there, I think also I asked for an appeal at some point or the previous meeting for my CUP, for my farm. I haven't heard any response to that at all, so I'd like to know officially, my question is, what's the status of that? Also, I, another, Friday I went in to talk to Mr. Steve Weiss, the planning director, about my situation. He said what I needed was a reconsideration. I'm not familiar with this process at all. I've never heard of it before. And he said he would have to ask his supervisor, the city manager. So, so Monday, I, I'm not sure, but I think I got the response. It was a citation on my front, front door or on my mailbox. So I'm not sure if that was the official answer to my request for reconsideration. I don't even know the process, so I'd like to ask the council, what's the process? Is that my answer to my request for reconsideration? And I'd like to know if the staff asked his boss and what the answer was. So those are official requests. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Mr. City Manager, will you please follow up with Mr. McConnell to answer his questions specifically, and, and I'm expecting that would be offline so you can have a discussion about it with him?
Yes.
But then let the council know?
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right. That was my last request to speak, so I'll close public comment and bring it back to council for their communications.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I could briefly respond to that?
Which part would you like to respond to, Mr. City Attorney?
The appeal process?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, under the municipal code, a, an applicant for a conditional use permit has the opportunity to appeal the Planning Commission decision within 10 calendar days of the Planning Commission's decision. In this case, as I understand, the Planning Commission approved his conditional use permit on October 24th, therefore the appeal period expired in early November. So at this point, there is nothing for the City Council to consider on that conditional use permit. If...
What's the, what's the process for appeal?
The process to appeal would be to file an appeal with the city clerk with an appeal fee.
So they don't have to come before the City Council to file that appeal?
That is correct. It would be through an administrative process before it comes to the City Council. But that period has passed.
Okay.
That has expired. If Mr. McConnell wanted to pursue amending the CUP, he's welcome to go and file a request for an amendment to amend the CUP with our planning staff, and there's a fee involved for that, but it would go to the Planning Commission first, and the Planning Commission could consider it, and at that point, if he wanted to appeal their decision, he's welcome to do that. But at this point, there is nothing for the City Council to do or consider on that conditional use permit. And briefly, in response to Mr. Rivera's comments, I appreciate your concern regarding the First Amendment. I can assure you and the council and the public that there has been no First Amendment violation. The City Council has a right to control the time, place, and manner of its meetings. In that case, the mayor was, as I understand, the emails had a consistent message. That message was conveyed to the City Council, and in an effort to avoid repetition and save time, that was done. But I can assure you, there was nothing stopping them from communicating to the city in any way, verbally or in writing, and therefore there is no First Amendment violation. But I appreciate your concern. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And also, if you would please follow up with Mr. McConnell and walk through that process and any other questions he may have?
Of course.
Thank you. All right. So Councilmember Allen, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know I had a chance before the meeting, but I want to first state Happy New Year to the staff and fellow council members, all the residents who are out there listening and paying attention. I want to wish you a Happy New Year, and thanks for coming back to tune in, all those out there on Channel 3. While, where I, what I attended is the Southern California Association of Governments, also known as SCAG, that planned briefing where we discussed the draft Connect SOCal, and that's this document right here, and that's the regional transportation plan for 2020 through 2045, and for transportation and sustainable community strategies. I won't go into the whole thing, but the highlights that I took away, there's over $87 billion in transportation improvements to San Bernardino and Riverside County over the next 25 years. And, you know, 25 years sounds like a long ways off, but if you think back 25 years and what you were doing 25 years ago, and you, it really doesn't seem, you realize that it's going to be on us soon, and so we need to be prepared for it. Yeah, that's a lot of money, but that's for more than 2,000 projects, and it will provide almost or close to 100,000 jobs created by these projects, so that's a good thing. And the cost of these projects is, the value of the projects is 50% more than the cost it's been estimated, so it's, we need to move forward with these because over the next 25-year period, the inland empire is expected to grow by a projected 35% increase in population. So if you think that you're stuck in traffic now, 35% increase in population. So, but among these 2,000-plus projects in this plan are the new east-west multimodal transportation corridor from the Hemet area over to Corona Lake Elsinore area. There'll be express lanes added along the 10, 15 freeways. And here's the really great thing close to us, is they're opening up, or they're going to build the Bredeins Passenger Rail Project. And when this project is completed, this will be the first hydrogen-powered, zero-emission passenger train in North America. And I think that's a pretty big deal because I'm all about the environment and clean air. And if, and if you are like me and you would prefer on your trips to fly out of Ontario Airport rather than have to handle the traffic to LAX, well, this plan also addresses the expected growth there. Three years ago, there were 4 million passengers went through that airport in one year. Last year, it went up to 5 and 1/2 million, and they project it to be at 33 million by 2040. So they're going to build improved bus routes and transportation routes to get folks to and from the airport using public transportation. Now, the individual from SCAG who was giving us his briefing, and the, the gentleman who spoke earlier from, lives over on Locadina Drive...
Councilmember Isaac Sutcliffe.
Yes, that gentleman. Okay. I spoke with the briefer at the SCAG meeting, and you may have been there. So if you think that you're stuck in traffic now, 35% increase in population. But among these 2,000-plus projects in this plan are the new east-west multimodal transportation corridor from the Hemet area over to Corona Lake Elsinore area. There'll be express lanes added along the 10, 15 freeways. And here's the really great thing close to us, is they're opening up, or they're going to build the Redlands Passenger Rail Project. And when this project is completed, this will be the first hydrogen-powered, zero-emission passenger train in North America. And I think that's a pretty big deal, because I'm all about the environment and clean air. And if you are like me and you would prefer on your trips to fly out of Ontario Airport rather than have to handle the traffic to LAX, well, this plan also addresses the expected growth there. Three years ago, there were 4 million passengers went through that airport in one year. Last year, it went up to 5 and 1/2 million, and they project it to be at 33 million by 2040. So they're going to build improved bus routes and transportation routes to get folks to and from the airport using public transportation. Now, the individual from SCAG who was giving us his briefing and the gentleman who spoke earlier from, lives over on Lockadina Drive?
Councilmember Isaac Suchel.
Yes, that gentleman. Okay, I spoke with the briefer at the SCAG meeting, and you may have been there. And we talked about the SB1 funds that are available for local cities through the competitive grant process. And there's the key, the competitive grant process. Okay, so, and those can be used, of course, like you stated, for those surface street projects. And I specifically am more interested, or most interested, in the Mount Vernon slope stabilization. And I explained it to him. He said, yeah, there are certain specific criterias, and this, that perhaps more than likely would fall into that criteria. So any little bit of monies that we can pool together to, you know, fix our streets, just like this gentleman said, and, you know, Jeremy mentioned Van Buren and Pico, all those streets. I know I've had residents ask me, when are we going to repave Barton Road? And then we patched the holes on the hill, and now the big rains came and they're back again. But I got to say, you know, you mentioned those roads haven't been repaved in more than 30 years. Well, that's a testament to the quality of the work Grand Terrace put down, isn't it? All right, so. We're in a new year now, and so I just want to say that I'm real focused on the Stop the Bleed program. I know I spoke with the chief and he's waiting on us. The ball's in our court. We need to set dates for training, and I'd like for us to find grant money, start at City Hall, set the right example. Let's get these kits on the walls in City Hall so the residents see them and know what they are and how they're used, and then we'll expand out from there. Others will follow. I'm excited about our Students in Government Day or Week, whatever we come up with. I really want to get that going. And I think we need to talk, start talking early about it so that the kids who want to participate and their teachers can be prepared for it. You know, there's been, some of the residents have asked me about Prop 13, that's coming up on the ballot. And the only thing I want to say about that is that it's not, the residential properties are not going to be affected, and it states in plain English, in the ballot measure, that it's for commercial and industrial properties, and it will bring them up to market rate taxes. And so the reason I brought that up is I would like to ask Mr. City Manager if it's possible for us to find, to get an analysis of, if that ballot measure passes, what will the increase in revenues to our city be? And for anybody who's interested in that ballot measure or any ballot measure coming up in November, you can go to ballotpedia.org, and that's a great site for that information. And I still am encouraging folks, join the Citizens on Patrol, okay? If you've got one of these up there on your database, you can pop it up on the screen, AJ. But COPs, I wanted to join it, but it's conflict of interest for me, so after I'm done with this, maybe I'll be able to join it. But it's a great opportunity for residents to get out, volunteer, and be a part of their community. So I talk about it all the time, and I'll continue to. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for coming out beginning of this new year. I just want to wish everybody well. They had a Happy New Year, and I want to, you know, prayers for our city this year and our men and women in the military. And I want to thank the Sheriff's Department for their quick reaction on, you know, Cal Skate. You know, it's discerning when you hear about your own little city when stuff like that happens. And unfortunately, you know, you'll have some bad apples in the bush that, you know, want to start trouble and stuff, and where other kids want to have a good time. So, you know, a lot of kids are having a good time. You just have a handful that start everything, and then one thing leads to another. Personally, I've been in plenty of riots working in the prison system for 26 years, so I know how it goes. And it just takes one mouth to get everything going. But hopefully now the sheriffs got hurt and the deputies, and hopefully now the staff in Grand Terrace, or residents in Grand Terrace got hurt and no kids got hurt. But once again, I just want to wish everybody, you know, a blessed year in this coming year, and, you know, thank you, staff, for everything you've done last year, and continue to work hard this year. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Mayor Protem Doug Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just simply like to thank the staff for their great work. It's oftentimes in a public situation, it's a thankless opportunity. We think that money and, you know, benefits make up the difference, but when you go the extra mile, it's only in the spirit of the person that's where it comes from. And I am afraid of seeing people getting beat down for doing good work, so I want to be the first to say thank you and that our staff is incredible and continued success in the coming year.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will begin with January 7th. We're off to a start with OmniTrans. We received and filed a Redlands Passenger Rail Project. The OmniTrans staff was gearing up to be the organization that would be running the Redlands Passenger Rail, and there has been a change in that. And so there was a briefing at the OmniTrans meeting. The operator will now be Southern California Regional Rail Authority. We also received and filed a Connect Forward Public Outreach Update. This is OmniTrans's review of their service area throughout the county. They will be changing the service that is provided through the city of Grand Terrace on Route 325. In fact, in their literature, they are proposing to eliminate Route 325 as it exists now. There will be service through a Route 305, I believe. But if there are any interested parties, there is more information on the OmniTrans website, there are contact phone numbers, and then they also will be holding a community meeting Monday, January 27th, from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. right here in our community room. We provided general direction on the transit district legislation. That is a legislation that OmniTrans was looking at to become a different type of entity, and they were doing that because of their role, or at least the role that they were going to play in management of aero service for Redlands Passenger Rail. And so the board decided that at this time, that is not needed and it will be set aside. We also had a closed session with a conference with our labor negotiator concerning labor negotiations with Amalgamated Transit Union. SBCTA, or San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, meeting was that same day. We had our quarterly litigation update in closed session with General Counsel, and we also had an evaluation of our General Counsel. We removed an agenda item in open session from, it was an item on Interstate 10 University Street Improvement Project, and so that'll come back to us at another time. The board gave direction to staff on funding strategy for the West Valley Connector Phase 1. That's a rapid transit bus that will be operating out in the Rancho Cucamonga, Ontario area. It'll be similar to the SBX that's here in San Bernardino, but it's a continuation of that same program. We approved an amendment to professional services contract with AECom Technical Services for design services on State Route 60 Central Avenue Interchange Project. We also authorized the board president to execute a construction and maintenance agreement with the BNSF Railway and the city of San Bernardino for demolition, construction, and maintenance of the Mount Vernon viaduct. We approved an agreement with Western Riverside Council of Governments to be a master agreement for cost sharing and providing an accounting mechanism for related collaborative work and grants. So we will be working with the Riverside Council of Governments on regional grants, and this gives us an opportunity for, if they're providing the work, we have a way to share in those costs. We also received information and provided direction on comments to be potentially submitted by San Bernardino County Transportation Authority on the draft Connect SoCal Plan that Councilmember Allen so nicely described to you. And we had a presentation of our comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal years 2018-19. We had an unmodified opinion that was issued by Crowe LLP, and this particular finance department has won awards for the work that they've done. Further, I wanted to also echo my colleague's sentiments of Happy New Year. This new year gives us a lot of opportunities and the things that we can do. I know we have a lot of focus that we need to look at for our street maintenance, but I know our project will be starting up again this year. And I also want to extend my thank you to the Sheriff's Department and the overwhelming response that they gave when we had our issues with Cal Skate. So thank you very much, and I will end my report there. We'll move on to our public hearings, of which we have one tonight. This is item six on your agenda. To speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. And so the process we will go through is we will have our presentation of agenda item. We will ask for any written communication received. We have, the city council has an opportunity to ask questions of staff and have staff respond to those questions. And then we will have our public hearing opened. Applicants, if in this case we have applicants, will be able to give their comments. These will not be limited to three minutes. We will have oral testimony from the public, again, limited to three minutes. Applicants rebuttal if necessary, and then we will close the public hearing and come back to the city council for deliberation. So tonight, our public hearing item is a zoning code amendment 19-02 to amend Chapter 18.06 definitions and Chapter 18.40 M2 Industrial District of the Zoning Code pertaining to contractor offices and storage yards. All that to now introduce Stephen Weiss, our Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor McDebo and council members. I won't repeat what you just said, but it is a change of zone for the industrial areas within the city of Grand Terrace, and it pretty much, it's an offshoot of another zoning code that was done in the past. So I'll get right to it. So going into the general plan and zoning, as you can see, there are, in the purple, there are five industrial zones, which are called M2, or like a heavy industrial zone. And the types of uses are heavier in use, generally not so close to sensitive land uses, that is the goal, and you're dealing in things that could potentially have noise, dust, maybe some heavier traffic aesthetics, and also dealing with mitigating hazardous materials. Assembly and warehouse and distribution and research is also common, and there are office uses too. So the background is, back in April of 2018, the council approved zoning code amendment 17-04, which adopted the ordinance for these industrial areas and clarified some of the uses within there. In that, uses with indoor storage do not require a conditional use permit for contractors. Contractors and storage is permitted within that zone. Uses with outdoor storage activities are subject to a conditional use permit. It was inadvertently left out in 2018, and also the side yard setback with the landscaping in there was inadvertently left out. So come to 2019, and on December 12th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, and that's 2012-19. The Planning Commissioner, Commission held a public hearing and recommended that the city council approve a zoning amendment 19-02 proposing to revise the M2 industrial zoning and amend, first of all, is the definition for contractor storage yards and facilities, which basically to add the term "state licensed" within there, and also to take out the term "vehicles," because that's more of an everyday type of use. Those would be light vehicles, and I'll show you examples as we go along. And it may also include types of materials that will support the contractor's storage uses for repair and maintenance. Also, amending Chapter 18.4, which pretty much now conditionally permits outdoor contractor storage. So the outdoor uses would still go through a conditional use permit with adequate screening, and then amend Chapter 18.40.050, which actually does now include the street side setback of 15 feet. That would be a building setback, and five feet of that will be a landscaping requirement. So in the M2 industrial designation, just to highlight this, high intensity uses are permitted by right, but do not require a CUP to park. And a lot of it goes down to what kind of vehicles you can park, whether they're lighter or larger vehicles. The M2 zoning district uses where day-to-day activities include business vehicles and frequent truck traffic, which is common. Contractors' offices and contractor's storage yards are uses consistent with this industrial zone. This is where you'll see them, and the use is similar to other uses permitted, that are permitted by right. Omitting the word "vehicle," as I said, for the contractor's storage yard does give the contractor more, it's more flexibility in taking their daily vehicles, generally smaller vehicles to work, and then the larger vehicles, that's a whole different question. That's for outdoor storage. So this is an example of typical vehicles that are permitted by right. And again, these are vans, light trucks, and also as you get into the wholesale storage and distribution, and medium-type manufacturing, the uses are businesses conducted indoors, and then you have truck wells, so everything is, should be screened adequately. So, and also, as far as the contractor's storage yard indoor, again, these are examples of what you would see, or business vehicles, and they're comparable, and intensity-wise, they're quite similar. So for contractors' office and contractor's storage yards, contractors' offices are permitted by right. No indoor or outdoor storage, it's just the office. A contractor's yards with indoor storage, they're permitted by right, with interior storage only. You can leave your work vehicles outside. Contractors' yard with outdoor storage are permitted with a conditional use permit, and it goes, and it does have to have proper screening. So in conclusion, the zoning change, it's exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and this is for first reading. We do recommend approval of this, consistent with the Planning Commission recommendation. And that does conclude our comments, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written communication on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back to council. Do you have questions for staff at this time? I don't see any lights on my new panel, so. All right. No questions at this time, so I will open the public hearing. I will ask if we have any requests to speak from the members of the public that are here tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I will close public hearing and bring it back to council for their deliberations. Councilmember Allen.
Do you, I don't have any deliberations or any, I'm ready to make a motion on it.
Then please do.
So direct the city, conduct probably, and direct the city attorney to read by title and way further, and introduce the ordinance. I move that we, what are we doing, Pat?
Moving to staff recommendation.
Moving the staff recommendation. I move that.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen.
Second, I see this as a cleanup item, which is appropriate.
Thank you. I have a second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Mr. City Attorney, if you would, please read by title only.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The title of the ordinance is as follows. An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding that zoning code amendment 19-02 is exempt from review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 16, I'm sorry, 15061B3, and amending Chapter 18.06 definitions and Chapter 18.40 M2 Industrial District of Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code pertaining to contractor offices and storage yards. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McDebo voting yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have no unfinished business. We'll move on to our new business. Item number seven on your agenda is provide direction on undergrounding master plan study. Mr. Allen French, Public Works Director.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmember.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I'm presenting this item on the undergrounding master plan. This item supports twenty thirty goal number one, to ensure fiscal viability, as well as goal number two, to maintain public safety. And it's also on the department's priority list as well. Back in April, the council met on Rule twenty eight funds, and during that meeting, we explored, the council had expressed a need to explore a master plan for undergrounding projects to expend the money for overhead utilities within the city. Rule twenty eight criteria applies to the roles, roads designated as highways, and as seen in our general plan, the roads that qualify are Barton, of course, Mount Vernon, and sections of Michigan as shown on this general plan. We have overhead lines on those roads that would qualify, and this master plan study, if we move forward with it, would identify those qualifying facilities. It would estimate costs for, and set priorities, projects for expending that money. And it would also come up with financing for projects. Should the council move forward with moving the master plan study ahead, a proposed schedule would look like this, with preparing the RFQ for the study and advertise, and then I'd come back to the council to award the contract, and then the consultant would prepare study and the master plan, and I would bring that back sometime later this year. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions from the council, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director French. Questions? Mayor Protem.
Mr. French, my understanding, we can kind of do this in a two phases. I don't know that we have to do a really serious final plan until we actually do the work, but my experience has been that you can create a schematic plan for a lot of this stuff. It'd be basically like, you know, maybe a hundred scale plan of the city showing the various wiring and the types of wiring, but in a schematic or stick type of issue, and maybe we can save a little bit of money, thirty, forty grand, kind of tough on the budget, especially when we don't need to put it in that strong of a priority, so.
Yes, sir. Well, the master plan would identify projects, so it would have lengths between street sections and as well as the number of facilities that it would.
And is there any reason why we wouldn't be able to make the takeoffs ourselves so far as length? I'm just trying to, I'm looking at, as this is one of our lower priorities, but we do have money, and rather than, you know, knee jerk reaction on the money, maybe we can, you know, downscale the first phase of this thing and keep it in a schematic range so that we identify what's there. You've seen when they go out there and they fly a project and they say, okay, this was a manhole. If we're not sure what kind of manhole it is, it's pretty simple to find out, but, you know, those kinds of, you know, lines, rather than, you know, this is a full-scale Edison plan.
Sure, sure, I understand. Yeah, we, it would be.
Could be considered.
That's possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen.
Mr. French, will the Rule twenty eight funds cover the cost of the undergrounding master plan, the study and the plan?
No, sir, Councilman Allen, it would not qualify for that use of those funds.
So, because I know in our staff report, it says that we'd be using a portion of the money earmarked for the Mount Vernon slope stabilization project. I know also that it.
That's an option.
That's an option, because the, when, when we said the early estimates for the undergrounding plan are thirty to forty thousand, I can only imagine what the later on estimates might be, and the Mount Vernon slope is stabilizations, you know, for me, is important.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. And because we have a number of funds that are earmarked to certain areas, one of the things that we would be doing, when we come back with the RF, with the, with the award the RFQs, we'll tell you what we believe is the best use of those funds. There's multiple categories that we can, we can pull from. And also in relation to Mayor Protem's comment earlier, we can develop the scope of work to, to really, to identify the areas that, to identify the areas that, that are, would be priority in terms of where we get the most bang for, for our buck, in terms of trying to drill down to different areas. So we can develop the RFQ on a scope to, to comment on what it would look like to have a more detailed plan versus what, with a thousand point of, a hundred, from a higher level, I'm sorry, excuse me. So we can, we can look at the RFQ that way and get responses based on that, and award based upon the level of desire that the council would like to, to move forward in this initial process.
Okay, so we can, can we lower or narrow the, the window of opportunity as far as cost? So we have a early estimate between thirty thousand and forty thousand. Before we go out for RFQ, could we make that a smaller amount?
So, remember, what we're doing is we're sending out the RFQ, and we're setting the standards of what we're looking for. And so we can, we can say, in terms of example, we might want to do a phase one, phase two, and they have them break at cost in terms of phases, and then the council can select phase one, two, three, or the entire process.
Okay. Councilmember Allen.
If we, if we don't do the underground study and spend the money on it, I mean, I, I don't see how this is that high of a priority to need that study done this urgently to spend that kind of money on it. But what would be, would there be a repercussion to, I don't know, businesses along the Barton Road corridor or anything if we did not proceed with this, long term?
Well, the important component is that you have about one point, you'll have about one point five million dollars to accomplish the goal of undergrounding on particular arterials. The initial money of forty thousand dollars, while it may seem like a lot, in terms of if you expend that, those proceeds, it will give you access to that one point five million dollars. And, you know, and it's not, it's not like you spend the money and the project happens like that. We're talking about the, you know, the, the design of the undergrounding, and so it'll take a little while. So I would assume that even by the time we come back for the, for the approval of the RFQ, we've already had the mid-year report, and we can come back with the council and say, we've identified some resources, so it may not be from, I know there's some angst maybe pulling from the potential bond proceeds from the Mount Vernon slope, but we are identifying multiple revenue sources that we can come back and tell you, tell you which, which we believe is the best source for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy, so the one point five, is that from Edison?
Yes, that's the Rule twenty eight money, and when I say one point five, you currently have about a million, a million dollars, and they will allow you to advance, you know, five years in advance, you'll get like one point five million when you start your project.
If we, in your opinion, if, you know, we did a study and that we only had one point five, how, how far can we get underground with one point five?
Well, they limit you in terms of the number of poles, so I, it all depends on, what you'll get is you will get in your final product, you'll get sections, and they'll, and so it could be, you know, for example, there is development that's supposed to be occurring in certain parts of the city. And so if the developer is required to do some undergrounding, and we can do some undergrounding in a separate location that's contiguous with that, that, that would be conceivably another opportunity for us to get more bang for the buck and more, and more value.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor, what I understand is, is that in the past, you know, over our forty-one year history, prior administrations have been guilty of pushing this down, down, you know, kicking the can down the road, and there's no planning. The problem with the no planning is, is that exactly what Jeremy was talking about, you know, gee, where did that road come from? It came from the county, and having anything to do with the city at the time, because I was here. I'm as old as I look. In this instance, what we're trying to do is be proactive, so we're not spending a million dollars to do a piece this big. What we're trying to do is at least get a plan developed so that we can get a master plan set up, so that we can logically finance certain items. We're already paying dearly in relation to what we're doing with storm drain and road, actually road and storm drain. So let's not get in that kind of a, you know, spider nest. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen.
Okay, I just want to ask Mr. City Manager, I just want to make sure I'm clear on something. Spending, having the master plan, is that sort of a prerequisite to proceeding on and getting the, like, when you said, well, you got to spend the forty grand to get the one point five million or so, I mean, you got to have the master plan in place to be able to apply and get the, is that the way I understand it?
Yes, in order, in order to the undergrounding program, you have to have a master plan.
All right.
Okay. Are there any requests to speak on this item, Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, then we'll bring it back to council, and our quest is to give direction to staff, and so would, is there anyone who would like to make a motion to issue an RFP for scope of services to develop this underground master plan?
I will.
Okay, Councilmember Allen.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Allen for direction to staff, second by Mayor Protem Wilson, please
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabbou voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to item eight, which is adoption of resolution approving application to the California Volkswagen mitigation trust zero emission transit school and shuttle bus grant program for the senior transportation program for the purchase of an electric bus. Is that our Assistant City Manager Cynthia Fortune?
Yes.
And she will be presenting her report from the well tonight. Assistant City Manager Fortune.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. Good evening. As Mayor mentioned, this is for approval of a grant application. This project supports the city's mission to preserve and protect our community and its exceptional quality of life through, through thoughtful planning within the constraints of a fiscally responsible government. As city council and the public are aware, this city senior transportation program has provided bus services to and from the senior center since May of 2016. This was a bus that was provided by Omnitrans and which was eventually sold to us for a dollar. So it is a used bus, however, the seniors embraced this transportation program with all open arms, so we have seen a steady rise in the participation of seniors in the bus program. And again, being so many hundred thousand miles on that, in the recent months, that that bus has experienced several mechanical failures and increased repairs. And one of the major failures, and it always happens during the summer months, is the failure of the air conditioning unit. And this had resulted in quite a few days of adjusted varied bus pickup and drop off So the California Volkswagen mitigation trust's zero emission transit, transit school and shuttle bus program is currently accepting applications for grant funding to replace existing gas shuttle buses with new electric shuttle buses. So the trust is actually worth four hundred twenty-three million, provided by Volkswagen. One hundred and thirty million is set aside for new shuttle buses, and this is to help mitigate excess nitrogen oxide gases released by these vehicles. So the grant program requires city council approval, approval by the authorized body, and we are doing this through the adoption of a resolution to apply for the grant. We are eligible to receive a grant award of up to a maximum of one hundred and sixty thousand applications, since they opened it, my analyst is in the audience, I think it was like October of last year, yeah, Ms. Jackson is over there. Applications will be reviewed and selected on a first come, first served basis, so we think once the funding is gone, it will be gone. Applications will be accepted, defaults have been exhausted, so what we're trying to do is fast track and get our application in as soon as we can. So Ms. Jackson wanted to show you all the features of a new senior bus, and see the top of the line is new air conditioning system. And again, you know, if it's a new bus, a hundred percent electric, now with our new electric chargers, we can charge it in our own parking lot. It'll have a PA system, two-way radio, seats twelve comfortably, vinyl seats, no leather, okay, that's okay, but it's a hundred percent electric. So.
Does our current bus have a wheelchair lift?
Yes, it has one. This actually will come with two, two wheelchair lifts. Is it written on there? It's not, but I believe it, we had it on the. So what we're recommending again is that city council approve the resolution after adoption, again, we will submit this as soon as we can, and upon approval of the grant, we will return to the city council for approval of the grant agreement with San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, as the state will be the local administrator of the grant. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Fortune. Councilmember Allen.
I think this is a really, a really great thing, that we're able to get this, but do we know how much the, the bus is going to cost?
Yes, sir. Approximately two hundred and sixty-two thousand.
Okay. I know that they offer a leasing option, would there, is there any, has their analysis been done, would there be any benefit to the lease over a purchase?
One moment.
If, if you haven't done that, it wouldn't, you don't have to answer.
No, no, we haven't. We'll, we'll look into that and get back to city council.
Okay. Good. And also any matching fund availabilities? Okay.
If I, if I may just jump in here for a second.
Mr. City Manager.
Because we are applying for a grant, and the grant proceeds will be used only for the purchase of the vehicle, but certainly the city does have an option to try and enter into a separate agreement, but that would not be through this mitigation program. Their, their overall goal, just a very quick history of this grant, this is the Volkswagen mitigation grant, they were, there were some issues in terms of what their emissions reporting occurred, and so this was a settlement in the process, and so their overall goal is to, to, so for example, when we remove our, our combustion vehicle engine from this, we would get that, we would get the, we get the grant for, for this particular electric bus. So, so we don't have that option to, under this grant, to lease, we can enter a separate lease of a separate program, but not through this particular grant program.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Hesse.
So you said it's going to be a Volkswagen? No, I was wondering if we painted like Herbie the Love Bug if it's going to be Volkswagen, so seniors might like it. Also, I was concerned too, how much the overall cost of this vehicle was, and if we do look at different options on that, so if we're not getting anything out of the general funds, or we could look at maybe Omnitrans or somebody else helping us out, so that's my concern.
Yes, I was going to answer. Councilmember Allen, yes. Councilmember Hesse, as we said, the grant will give us up to one hundred and sixty thousand. The estimate that was provided by, by our analyst researching it is about a hundred thousand more. So the city manager and I are going to be looking at possible AQMD funding, air quality management district funding, we do get funding from there every year. We also are going to look at applying for a community development block grant for, for the balance of that, and at this point, yes, not to use any general fund monies for the difference.
Are twelve seats adequate for this, if our program's growing, for this bus?
Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, asked, required.
Yes, so what happens is, I believe that that's, that's, our current bus is fourteen, that's without the wheelchairs being on the bus, but when the wheelchairs are on the bus, it takes up additional two seats, so it's twelve. It is adequate, and what we're doing now, because the program is growing, we make multiple trips to, to different locations. So we're, I think the council recently extended the hours of operations of the bus driver because the program is, is so popular, and then if you, you know, we do that monthly report, and you'll see the numbers are dramatically different than they were a year and a half ago. And so it is continuing to. And so, it is continuing to grow as the seniors feel more comfortable in traveling in groups and we actually find out the different locations that they'd like to go to.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll bring it back to council. And I will talk about Omnitrans a little bit since that came up. It's my understanding that part of the reduction in service that they're doing across the county, when they looked at our city, they looked at the strength of our senior bus program and determined that they could cut back on some of those services that were not being used because seniors are using our bus service. So, with that, I will ask council, what is your pleasure on this item?
Madam Mayor, I recommend that we adopt a resolution of the City Council, the City Grand Terrace, California approving application for grant funding from the California Air Resources Board Volkswagen Environmental Mitigation Trust for the purchase of an electric bus for the senior transportation program.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Hesse. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. Item nine is our City of Grand Terrace Special Events List for calendar year two thousand and twenty. Mr. G. Harold Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, here we are.
That looks better.
Special events list for calendar year two thousand and twenty. So, as the mayor and council, most of the citizens are aware, last year marked the first year in many years where the city actually became the responsible party for most of the special events. In the past, during, due to financial hardships of the organization, we relied heavily on volunteers to step up and run the different various programs for us. But now, through our new collaborative process with those volunteers, we're providing support and sometimes leadership, but then sometimes just support to host multiple events throughout the year. So, as the report indicates, so here's an example of what happened last year. There you go. That's just good video. Okay. So, I'll wait for him to establish that. But traditionally, what we do is we have a rabies vaccination clinic, we have a walk on Blue Mountain in March, and we have an American Red Cross blood drive, community cleanup, paint plant, and ladybug luncheon. That was a new addition to this year's program. We have the art show, the Community Day program, which the city took over for the first time in a while, and that was a big success. We support the foundation and the Veterans Wall of Freedom Committee with a Memorial Day event. We have the bulky item pickup program where residents can bring in materials here at the city hall, and we have Burt Tech on site. Then we have our summer recreation activities program, which could vary from, vary from swimming to either summer camps we had one year. We also have movies and music in the park. And we're going to be paring back that program a little bit this year to June and July. Last year, we had June, July, and August. And so, we saw some areas where we, without attendance, could be better if we just pared it down. We also have the country fair. And just a quick note, that the country fair and the art show are programs that are, have thirty years' worth of history that the historical and cultural committee have been operating over the years. And then we have a very successful Veterans Day event at the Veterans Freedom Park. And then we have a huge program, obviously everyone's aware of the Light Up Grand Terrace. And then we have the city's birthday party, which is also a nice local event. Were we able to get the movie showing? No? Okay. And so, that movie was just a quick, two-minute representation of all the events that occurred last year. In the, in the council's packet, we have a list of activities that were planned for this year. And there was a slight modification. In last year's program, we had a national night out that was put on by law enforcement. It was very, very successful. So, we wanted to include that again in this year's program. The overall cost for these programs in terms of the city's expense is about thirty thousand dollars. I can say you might want to add an additional sixty thousand dollars under that if we had to pay for the labor and with all the volunteer time that we get from citizens. And really, how the process works is the city has a special events committee that consists of fire, police, public works, and staff. And we meet with the organization that's putting on the event. And we go over with our primary goals, ensuring that the employee, the public is going to be safe and that we have the resources available to carry out the event. And so, with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Allen.
Yeah. Last year, we had some residents who had some, expressed a desire for the city to coordinate the rabies vaccination clinic with dog licensing. Can you let us know if, how are we doing with that?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, based upon the council's approval, that every, every dog, this year, the dog licenses are due on the date in which your rabies vaccination expired. And so, now, that's, that's how that works. So, for example, historically, we required people to start getting their licenses at the end of the year. So, they would be coming in now, getting those licenses. They have thirty days before they face a penalty. So, residents where the rabies vaccination that we have on record, we sent notices out to anyone who had a rabies vaccination that was going to be expiring between January one and March thirtieth. And we've told them, your license is good until that date of vaccination. And then for those residents who have rabies vaccinations that are, that end after March thirtieth, we would then send out a notice to them saying, you've got a window of opportunity to get rabies vaccination done at that point in time. But we are still going to have a rabies vaccination clinic. We're going to have one, I believe, in February, and again, then another one most likely in April or June.
Thank you.
Further questions? Is there, are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, we'll bring it back. It is a receive and file. Mr. City Attorney, would you like us to vote on that?
Yes, please.
All right. It's a motion to receive and file.
I'll second.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
So, we have no request for future agenda items to consider tonight. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy, do you have further communications for us?
I do, Mayor. And I really wanted to show that video. So, are we able to pull that video up, AJ?
Yes, just a second.
Okay. So, maybe the video is in this, in this particular one. Okay. So, we have a notice for the dog park is going to be closed from January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty to March fourth, two thousand and twenty. We are reseeding the dog park and repairing the DG area. And what's important is that we want to make sure that we, the park is reseeded and it's, and it allows a time to grow so we can keep the park as nice as possible. And so, we've put the notices out, to the residents, notices at the dog park, notices on Channel Three. We're putting the notice out there that the park is going to be closed from January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty to March, May, March fourth, two thousand and twenty.
It was packed there this afternoon. A lot of people using the park.
A lot of people. Okay. My next item. All right. So, this is the two thousand and twenty Activity Guide, in which we shared this with residents at the Light Up Grand Terrace. But during the month of January, February, we will be mailing these out to every resident in the city of Grand Terrace. The Activity Guide lists all of our activities that I discussed tonight, but also lists the various organizations that are available, from Little League to soccer to football to Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. And so, this guide was put in place so we never have to hear what we heard in the past. There's nothing to do in Grand Terrace. There's a lot of stuff to do in Grand Terrace. And this book is actually online and will be sent to every household in the city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Oh, the video. We can show the video now.
All right.
And we wanted to show the two-minute one, not the twenty-two minute one.
Or show two minutes of the twenty-two minute one.
There we go. When we turn the volume up, we're set. So, that's a quick synopsis of what happened last year. And that video actually plays at nine o'clock every morning on Channel Three. And behind that is the actual half an hour video that encompasses all the videos for the, for the, for the year. So, it's, actually, Channel Three is really picking up the viewership, is almost as popular as the bus.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. We do not have a closed session tonight. So, at this time, I will adjourn. Our next regular City Council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, at six p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you all for being here tonight. We are adjourned.